Okay, I just wanted to report out, we had an executive session on a water line agreement with the town of Richmond to modify a couple of aspects. One was the, to adopt their water usage table from the original agreement in 1991 to what their citizens pay now. And also too, we also negotiated down the capital improvement expense for the new water tower that they're constructing. We're responsible per the agreement of 20.2 percent, we negotiated to 16.33, so it saved the users $50,000. The vote was four yes and one no. Tom and Buck was a yes, I was a yes, Bob was a yes, David was a yes, and Sylvia was a no. I want to call the water, the Huckington Town Council meeting, May 18th, 2015, to order with a moment of Sabbath meditation and superfly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
First switch.
And you don't, if anyone feels like it.
I'd be tempted to jump out.
I mean a motion to sit as licensing board.
Clear.
All those in favor? Okay, first on our agenda folks is a multi-event permit. Open a hearing for a multi-event permit filed by Jen Johnson at Holly Tree Campground for the following events. Musical entertainment provided by Earth Riders Band scheduled for Saturday, July 11th, 2015, from 6:30 to 10:30 p.m. A DJ with amplified music for dancing scheduled for Saturday, September 19th, 2015, from 6:30 p.m. to 10:30. At the Camp Pavilion at Holly Tree Campground located at 109 Ashway Road, Ashway. The events are not open until October. Applicant present, I think. Anything, spread away so the conversation can... Is there a waiting for the class?
No.
Any questions, I'll stop to my right, Tom, anything on this?
What kind of music is it?
Earth Riders? It's like a bluesy kind of music. One of our campers in the park, it's his band.
I hope you have a wonderful time. I'm sure you will. I hope you have a wonderful time too, and I know it's two this year instead of three. But I think that'll be a great help to the neighbors, but I'm sure you'll have a wonderful time and I hope you enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
Well, they came from this town, absolutely. We had a problem last year with one of your neighbors, I remember. If I'm correctly, the noise.
That was two summers ago.
Two summers, okay. And that's all resolved, I mean at least?
Yeah, we stay on top of the noise and we try moving the speakers to, so it's not amplifying up to the audience.
Good, I think it's public one, I wish I was camp.
Anyone out in the public wishing to be heard on this hearing? Okay. We have a motion, folks.
Would we approve the multi-event permit filed by Jen Johnson at Holly Tree Campground? For the musical entertainment provided by Earth Riders Band scheduled for Saturday, July 11th, 2015, from 6:30 to 10:30 p.m. Oh, excuse me, I can go on, and, to continue, sorry about that. And the DJ, that includes music for dancing scheduled for Saturday, September 19th, 2015, 6:30 to 10:30 in the Camp Pavilion at Holly Tree Campground.
Okay, motion made second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
A motion to overturn its licensing, or do you think we can use counsel?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is the consent agenda, approved, May 5th, 2015, financial town assembly minutes. Set June 1st, 2015, as a hearing day for special event permit filed by Ashway Act 1 of Cub Scouts. Accept the following report, town clerk, who refunds submitted by the tax collector.
Motion to approve as read.
Second, okay, motion, second, any further discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
First, public forum. Anyone out there wishing to be heard on any items on the agenda? This is again not a hearing, so if there's anything on the agenda you wish to speak about, you might want to do this now, because the second public forum is at the end of our agenda. Alright, next under my report, town council report, president report, is the Hope Valley Ambulance Corps Awards Dinner at the Pavilion Restaurant. I attended along with Bill and my wife. It's a fun event, the ambulance corps has their awards banquet. And three of our residents got awards. EMT of the Year was Galvin Becky Williams. Patrick Hawkins was the Volunteer of the Year, Volunteer of the Year Award. And then a young fellow named Eric Bloom who got the Heroes Award. All three from our town. The clerk's office is kind enough to have me hand out some certificates, as last year I went and didn't have it. So I looked a little on it, something to do with, at least in the office, I had that to hand out. So it was a great event and very proud of the accomplishments of the three fellows from our town. Okay, moving on, the next item under new business is to discuss and consider approving a bid award for DPW's Uniform and Material Rental and Cleaning Services from July 1st, 2015.
There you go.
It's abandoned, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the one with that staple that doesn't have it.
Now we know where the difference was.
That's right.
We talked about this probably twice already, but anyway, sorry. Next, under the town manager's report, Bill.
Thank you. As a council, well knows, we've been in constant communication with National Grid with respect to their substation on Route 216. They give us periodic updates, and last Thursday, we met with the National Grid supervisors. The first one was Mike Rourke, and the other one was Paul Solus. Stuziat, yes. And we went with them for under the fourth and fifth. And they give us those updates, and basically the design of that, that substation is now basically complete. The equipment has been ordered and most of it is currently stored by National Grid. They still have a little permitting to do, but most of the permits with DEM have already been secured and approved. The overlying interest is that they're probably going to start construction in late September or early October of this year. And it's anticipated that will be, it'll take between 18 and 24 months. So it's really a huge project. They had a couple of issues that were resolved, there were some sacred rocks there that the arrogant Indians expressed an interest in, and that issue was resolved. It's a 16 acre site, and basically they're going to have two massive transmission stations. One to provide electricity once it's up and running, and another one for future use. They're going to close down the Oak Street Station, close down the station at Dahl Field once they get it running. But they did have a change of plans, they're going to keep the Canal Street Substation open in Weston. So we've had nothing but transparent and open discussions, the council president, and Dolphy, and myself, and Jim Lantier. And we found the National Grid to be very amiable of our requests. We have another, we have another meeting scheduled for Thursday, July 30th, and that's serious and periodic news.
Any questions, so Bill, folks? Okay, thanks, Bill. Next, under new business, is discuss and consider approving a bid award for DPW's Uniform and Material Rental and Cleaning Services from July 1st, 2015, through June 3rd, 2018, to G and K Services in North Attabell, Mass. The sole bidder, in the amount of $81.62 per bid.
I would say so moved each. Second.
Okay, motion made second, any further discussion, or any discussion? Have we heard them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, under new business, is discuss and consider approving a bid award for the purchase and application of applied emulsified asphalt chip sealing to New England Asphalt Services LLC of Norfolk, Connecticut. A low bidder, in the $228,670.56.
A second.
Okay, motion made second, any discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is discuss, consider, and vote on a resolution opposing Senate Bill 0510 and House Bill 5777, legislation to legalize marijuana. This was asked to be put on by our infamous Chief of Police, Dave Palmer. And Dave, I don't know if you want to say a couple of quick words, then we could be able to, I know you are very involved in what you have in your past life, as well as your current life, and law enforcement, so.
I'm not sure I can do a quick few words on marijuana. I think it's an important resolution for municipalities to get together to show the opposition on these two bills. For our youth, for the future of Rhode Island. I did go out to Colorado, I saw what's happening in Colorado. I think it will be very detrimental to Rhode Island, the youth are using marijuana at an unprecedented rate right now. It's going to increase, absolutely, if we pass that law. I can expound quite a bit on that, and I don't know how far you want me to expound on it. The problems that Colorado is having right now is, law enforcement just can't keep up with it. We can't keep up with it here right now with medical marijuana as it exists right now. Law enforcement is behind the eight ball right now. If you, if that gets legalized, we will be, we would just, we will not be able to recover from that. The black market will come to Rhode Island, and the youth will be using quite a bit more. There will be more addiction, and that addiction will lead to drugs with heavier addiction, such as methamphetamines and heroin. I can expound on all of these things if you'd like, or I can entertain any questions.
Do we have any questions to that, Dave, Chief?
Chief, do we have a list, does the state provide us with a list of those who are growing marijuana in each community for medical, so-called medical purposes?
Absolutely not, we don't get, we don't have lists, some, HIPAA kicks in, so we don't, we don't have, there's 3,500 care givers right now. Those are people that can sell marijuana to other patients, up to five. We don't know who those are people are, those people are basically pharmacists.
They can grow this, I mean, we're talking about people.
They can grow it and sell. And then you have between 11,000 and 12,000 medical marijuana cardholders that they can grow marijuana for themselves. But the amount of marijuana that each and every one of these people can grow is far superior to anything that they could ever use. The average.
We have no idea how many of those people are in this town. I don't want to say those people, but you want to talk about the people that are growing marijuana, they have to provide a presence.
Council, if I had to, if I, and this happened, is if I receive a person's name, then I'm able to call Department of Health. It takes between two days and two weeks before they can call us back. That's not the Department of Health's fault, that's, they're undermanned because how many applications are coming in daily? And they just can't keep up with it.
You know, I guess someday, it's going to, it may happen, but I don't think the day is today, or tomorrow, or next year. Obviously, with the medical marijuana program, obviously, the state and all law enforcement needs to be able to wrap their heads around it and deal with it. And we know there are uses, somebody who is legally is able to grow for patients, because I've read it in paper, where they go beyond that and they sell to other people. They have them more than they're supposed to have. But I know that I had a good friend who died a few years ago, and she was a fourth stage breast cancer. And she lived for nine years, and she had chemo for nine years. And she was in the medical marijuana program, it started, I don't know how many years ago it started, but she was in that. And she was able to tolerate it without sickness and nausea, and that's how it helped her. So I do see that the medical marijuana has its uses, but it also has abuses which you have to deal with. So legalizing it is just going to make it all that much worse for you folks. So yeah, I'm not in favor of legalizing it at this time, I don't know if I ever will be, but not today.
The law enforcement people that I know recognize there are some people facilitating illnesses to have that marijuana content. Unfortunately, they're few and far between, and those people that need that truly angry, just like the care, the few caretakers that are doing it for the right reason, which is to supply marijuana to the people that they consider their patient. And again, the problem is that they're few and far between. They're selling to juveniles that unfortunately, many of them are drug, they're all drug dealers, but they were drug dealers before they became caretakers. Because now that we've legalized them to be a drug dealer.
Barbara?
I also agree with Sylvia, that I don't necessarily believe that it's the right time to legalize it, and I don't know whether it would eventually. I do think that there needs to be a lot more law and attention given before it is perhaps legalized. I'm very interested in what Oregon and Colorado are doing. But I'm also very sympathetic to the needs of some of the citizens, both returning vets, cancer survivors, people having cancer, because there's like hundreds of thousands of them, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of them. So I am very sympathetic to their needs, and this might be one of the ways they can finish their life in some kind of decency and respect. But I also don't believe that this is the right time. I don't think this is that we have enough information yet. I don't think we know how to control what could be a very good thing for some people and is an abusive thing to others. So I am for the resolution, at least for the moment, until we have several years down the road toward discovering more about it. But I am very sympathetic to those who need it. I have never used it, never needed it, but I can't even imagine some of the pain some of these people go through. So that's my opinion, I'll certainly follow up what you fast forward.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, I attended a charitable task force at the middle school, and I learned a lot. It's Chief Palmer was there, as well as Chief Johnson from Richmond, a medical doctor, and a woman from the AG's office. And I guess the part for me that really, aside from I'm not very legalizing, I think that it's a gateway drug, and I think ultimately it leads to other things, as the chief has mentioned. But for medicinal purposes, if somebody really needs it, I'm fine with it. But I just think, like Chief Palmer said, there's a lot of folks, I think, that are trying to find loopholes in the law. And the one part that really struck me is when I was at that seminar, is, you know, I was dumbfounded by the fact that they can grow up to 12 plants, and they can't really, you know, use all that. I'm thinking, it just, there wasn't, there was a huge disconnect between the amount of plants they could grow and ultimately, you know, produce marijuana, cigarette, whatever they do. Again, the amount that they can use or provide to their caregivers. It just was a huge disconnect, and I find that strikingly odd, if you're able to provide for five folks, well then have enough plants for five folks, not 12, not 12 pounds. It just seems like a huge disconnect, and I just think it leads to a lot of, a lot of issues where if they have extra, what are they going to do with it?
For our precious.
For our precious. Sell it, I'm sorry. It's crazy, it just, you know, aside from all the extra police issues, medical issues, the youth, you know, taking it on, it's just crazy. So that's way too sensitive. I will certainly support this resolution from the part of the.
Would we vote to oppose S 0510 and H 5777 legislation to legalize marijuana? And just send this to our local legislators and the, Scott always knows, the, I suppose, the speaker and the, Senator President?
Motion made, Barbara second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, under new business, discuss, consider, and vote on a $500 donation from Council Contingency, line item 5065-001, to Gordon Green Post for the Memorial Day Parade coming up this.
So move. Yes.
Motion made, second, second? I just wanted to point out before we vote on this, I was a little concerned for this one item, that the Gordon Green Post is in receivership because of the lawsuit. So I wasn't sure if it was definitively going on, so I called this guy named Henry, I think is his last name, he's the comment on, we're going to talk about Hogan's Heroes, but he's the commentator at the Legion. And he said it is definitely going on, we closed the Legion, but pray it can still go on, we've contributed money ourselves, and any other monies you folks could give would be much appreciated. So I just didn't want our money to go there, and then all of a sudden it not happened, so I confirmed to Henry that it's going on, so anyway, that's my choices. Motion made second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is put on by Councilor Thompson, discuss, consider, and vote to send car funds to Charahoe School Committee seeking the following information. Number one, matriculation policy, number two, community construction to rise, three, expansion of pre-K to use taxpayer funds petition to federalize. I'll head to go with some.
I was hoping that we could, and the superintendent's here tonight, I was hoping that we could send correspondence to Charahoe and just ask them, on these three items, a number of questions. Because there seems to be misinformation, well, I don't know, maybe it's the correct information, but I'm hearing different things throughout the community. When things are going to start, no, they're not going to start, it won't be this fall, but it will, you know, so I'll just take it one at a time. First one was the matriculation. I handed these questions off to the superintendent, and I don't know if anybody else has got any questions, but it might be useful if he could respond to these questions, if he's willing. And then if anybody else has any more, does that sound reasonable? Instead of me sitting here reading the questions, he's right here.
Barry, if you're up, I'll talk to you if you want to.
He's willing, so.
Okay, great.
Okay, please come to the podium.
And these are just some of my questions, so, you know, I don't know, how many others there are? Oh, no, I meant on the topics, that's all I meant.
So as always, feel free to call me anytime you have a question, because that clears things up quickly sometimes. So on matriculation, there is no new policy, because if you recall, help me to remember, the law proposed a change to the policy, and that was never adopted. So there is no new matriculation policy, there is no plan to move students between schools unless those parents request a move, and we can accommodate that based on space.
Which happens currently.
Which happens currently, and that happens by policy. But at this time, there is no new policy on matriculation. The numbers that you cite, and I don't have that in front of me, so I'm assuming these are correct, 157 students and 127 families, that was a question posed to me. Should there be a change to the Charahoe Act that would allow me to redistrict across town lines and to maximize efficiencies? That's where that number came from. So the Charahoe Act was changed, the school committee never adopted a matriculation policy, so everything is as is.
Okay, so I would just follow up and say, so therefore, obviously, you're not going to say, well, I don't really need the school committee, I'm going to report to you that I'm doing this, in other words, is something going to happen? At this time?
There is no plan as of today, May 18th, to move anyone who is not voluntarily requesting.
Okay, that was easy.
Okay, the second one, the school committee has not considered what to do with the rise to portable classrooms. There is no plan to build a building, there's been no item on the school committee agenda about building a building. And if there ever is, there is some very detailed protocols that the committee has to follow, including getting board approval and going to RIDE and getting RIDE approval and all of those steps. But no action has been taken from the, on the school committee level about the rise school. I know there's been talk on the side about it, because people realize that those portable classrooms are not designed for forever use. And something needs to be done at some point soon, but there's been no action taken by the school.
So I, one of the questions was, whenever there is a decision to move forward, it would follow the normal procedures where you have a building committee, this is new construction, and you ask the voters to approve X amount to build in a building?
I would expect that to be the case, but I, the only caveat I would put on that is that legislature and the Department of Education often change the rules, as they are now creating this revolving fund for school construction. We don't know what the rules could have to be. So as I sit, sitting here tonight on May 18th, I expect the normal procedures to be followed, unless the law changes.
So, okay, but even if the law changes, I didn't say law, but if Ryan, regulations change.
Regulations are the standing of law.
And they have money available, we would still have to, because the Charahoe Act says to vote the people, we'd still go to the vote, and we'd still have a building committee, correct?
That would be my expectation. And the last one about pre-K, there is no plan to ask the town to change the Charahoe Act. Pre-K services are required by federal law, and federal law overrides the Charahoe Act, so we have to provide those services. The district chooses to provide those services in preschool classrooms. The district could also provide those services by tuitioning those young children to private preschools and providing transportation. It's not about the classroom so much, it is about the service. So we have to provide services to three to five year olds who are identified through early intervention and through child finding screening. And the district has chosen, prior to me becoming superintendent, to provide those services through preschool classrooms. And I believe at one time it was a combination, there were preschool classrooms and students who were tuitioned out to private preschools.
So following along on this topic, there is going to be preschool established in the high school?
Right, so as part of the Career and Tech Program that deals with early childhood and elementary education training for high school students, we're going to locate a preschool in the high school as kind of a lab classroom, so they can actually practice the theory that they're learning. That classroom is being paid for with what's called categorical funding, Career and Technical Center categorical funding. It does not have to be spent in the Career and Technical Center, but it has to be spent on the Career and Technical Center program. So we're using that funding and state funding to redo that program. There will be a move of an existing preschool, there will not be a new preschool, or it will not be an additional preschool. And we have not decided yet which preschool we'll move.
The categorical funding, as we mentioned, originally those funds were targeted for the kitchen at the VOTech one day?
They were, and we went to bid on the kitchen, and they came in at close to $1 million. We don't get anywhere near that amount in categorical funding. We're scheduled to receive, I think, about $150,000 next year. And that's a project that really can't be phased, you really can't phase in the kitchen work, we looked at that. So I am looking for $1 million elsewhere, maybe through a grant or through some other funding source.
So will local taxpayer monies be used? So will local taxpayer monies be used at all? For the construction or any part of the preschool, at the high school?
I don't expect it to, I expect the money in the categorical funds to be enough.
But of course, I mean, there would be at least teachers, there would be some cost, or no?
Teachers exist.
The teachers already exist. At the, oh, I see, because you're moving one, right? You're moving one. That's pretty scary.
Of course not.
From my point of view, when I had little kids, I remember how terrified they were to go from fourth grade to middle school. You know, some kids were more terrified than others, and I had one daughter who was just terrified to go over there. And we know that there's more that are scared, but their achievements, their scores plummet after they leave the elementary schools, and they go down from fourth grade to fifth grade.
So I'm not aware of that. In fact, you cite a fact here that high achieving fourth graders enter the middle school where their grades drop. I am aware of no fact that says that high achieving fourth graders' grades drop when they go to the middle school. In fact, the middle school is ranked higher than both Hope Valley Elementary School and Richmond Elementary School.
So you don't believe that's true in any way?
I've got to see that fact, you cited it as a fact, and I don't know that the scores drop of high achieving fourth graders when they enter the middle school. In terms of the preschool, the preschool will have its own entrance, and will not go through the high school, and it's not atypical for high schools with this kind of a program to actually locate a lab classroom for use of a career and technical program. This is not like, it's not novel, this is a bit out of square.
Is there going to be, you know, if I wanted to work at a preschool, they're going to do background check on me, how do you deal with that? You're going to have students, you don't do background checks on students?
No, we can't do background checks.
How are you, how are you going to secure that we've got older folks, you know, older students around in nearby this preschool that's normally, that's why we separate things. We have a high school, we have a middle school, we have another preschool, and I understand you want to teach or allow it as a program through VOTAC, but anyway, that's close to nervous about that.
We have high school students right now who do internships in the preschools at Hope Valley School and at the...
I was hoping maybe that could continue, instead of, instead of having it in the high school, that they could have a day where they go in turn.
Can't do it for a day, because...
Or have a day, whatever.
But they have a block of time where they can go. That will continue, and we see this as an incredible opportunity for both the preschool kids and for the high school kids, because the preschool kids will get all kinds of attention under the supervision of the teacher. So they'll get a lot more attention with high school kids doing volunteer work and applying the theory that you, they're learning in class than they would have done if they were at the school or at Hope Valley School. That is a win-win for everybody.
The last question I had is, are there any kids that are beginning to any of these preschool programs, are there without, I guess they would at the high school, outside of the district, because it's through the VOTAC? Is it just for Charahoe folks?
So the preschool is for Charahoe preschoolers?
Excuse me?
The Charahoe preschools are for Charahoe preschoolers.